Okay. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting of February 9, 2023. And we're going to start with the budget meeting. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the United States of America. I'm glad and invisible with the issue of justice for all. Okay. Are there any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
Just, just one. There is no need for an executive session, and it's listed as 10. And what we'll do is we'll just proceed right to the budget meeting tonight.
Okay. Okay. Any comments from the public? Well, we will proceed on with our celebration of learning with the student council.
Awesome. So, once a year, I ask Jen, our advisor, Ms. Goodwin, to come with student council to give us an update. And we are fortunate tonight to have some of our student council members. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Goodwin, and she can take it from there.
So I am working this year with 13 fabulous people. And those that are not here tonight, I just want to let you know, there's Gabby Spray, Jay Lee Cervantes, Rayne Ormea, Sidney Cormier, Shar Rehman, Ellie Phillips, and Taylor Rehn. They could not make it tonight. And our president of student council, Cassidy, is going to share a little bit.
My name's Cassidy. I'm 13 and I'm president of student council. So far, we've done a spirit week, a winter ball, and we're currently selling Valentine's Day things for Valentine's Day. And then we plan to do another spirit week, another dance, and name that missing name.
Great.
Hi, I'm Natalie Etten. I'm a member of student council, and I'm 12. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Delia Gallagher. This is my first year on student council, and I am 12.
I'm Josephine Fandry. It's also my first year on student council, and I'm 11.
I'm Ollie Sings. I'm 11, and this is my first year on student council.
Good.
Thank you so much for coming.
Sounds like you planned some nice activities for the school. How'd the spirit week go well? Yeah.
Did you sell anything this morning? Everybody was gathering around your table this morning when I came in.
I saw people with flowers in their bags.
Yeah. It was going, starting off well.
No, there was a lot of people this morning. Like, there was a lot of people in my class, like, everybody over there.
My kids absolutely love them. Quinn got a chocolate rose, and Theo got a little stuffy tiger. They loved them.
Now, sometimes on the student council, you know, because you guys are in charge at that level, you know, sometimes you want to advocate for something like better meals in the cafeteria. Are you guys doing anything? Do you have anything you're trying to do?
Josephine, you can speak on that, because you did meet with Mr. Ross about something that we already took on so far this year.
Do I have to stand up?
We just can't see you.
I talked to Mr. Ross with my friend Sidney, but she's not here, about the hat rule, because the school rules were made a long time ago, and the hat is now not known as disrespectful as it was back then.
That's right. And just to kind of add a caveat to that, it was brought to me that perhaps hats can be every day, not just Friday. And I said to the person who brought it to me, you need to see your student council. So the person went to student council. You guys had an audience with, with people that thought hats should be worn every day, made a case, met with me. And then I mentioned to these guys, I said, this is a chance to see kind of like how things work. I took it to the faculty, and we had discussions at a lot of levels to come back with, we really do think as a school, we want to keep it to Friday, so it's less distractions, but maybe we can work on a theme where kids cannot allow to wear their hats more. So we're kind of working on that as a point.
Yeah, like on Spirit Week or something.
Right. And, and, yes, exactly. And what I did want to do is discourage the student council, because they didn't get exactly what they wanted, but I understand that's part of the process. Sometimes you don't always get what you want, and it was something kind of in the middle.
Well, that's what I was hoping to see, their advocating for things they want.
Exactly. They did a great job. They met with me, did a great job, and I brought it to the staff, and then I came back and met with them with what the answer is.
Because then they could see the process. Very good.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks so much for coming out tonight, guys. Told you it would be short. Thanks for coming. Here you go. Unless you want to stick around for a budget meeting, which I'm sure you're not that interested in.
Now, now, they can learn.
Yeah.
Don't discourage. Why are you discouraging them?
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Goodwin, for your leadership with that group.
It is my pleasure. They are fantastic.
Just as a little icing on the cake, was the dance through the student council?
Of course it was.
And how well did that go?
Phenomenal.
There you go.
How many people went to the dance? I should have asked them.
Close to everybody in fifth and sixth. And about half or a little more in seven and eighth.
That's fantastic, because it's been a couple of years, well, even before COVID, it had been a couple of years since there was a dance, I think.
Yeah.
And also with that, Jen, you know, dances don't just go by themselves, and it can't be just you. So could you just mention who was there to support you as a little shout out for those people? Because it was a Friday night.
Yes, it was a Friday night, and I put out the email saying, does anybody want to have some fun Friday night?
Chaperone.
And whatnot, and drinks happened to be water. Trying to get people excited to come. And so it was Dave Cody and Amanda Cormier, Sandra Packard, and Ally Hobbs. All chaperoned with me for the different dances.
And Patty, you were there as well, were you not?
Patty was there for, for seven and eight. Dave was there for seven and eight. Amanda stayed all evening with me.
Good.
Great.
Any dances that we could do?
Any of them. Could do any of the dances that the kids do. Set your mind to it.
There you go. Work on the hustle, Ray. We'll see you next month. Well, that one, I still remember. You might connect to that one.
I saw a lot of nice dress-up pictures on Facebook. So many of the kids were all spiffed up and dressed up, and it was nice to see them all excited for the dance.
It was nice to see girls in dresses. I mean, I'm old enough to...
Even with, even with work boots.
Hey.
That's the way they do it to the prom sometimes now. They go to the prom with a gown and sneakers. So, yeah. It's, it's, it's the thing.
Maybe the shoes cost more than the gown, and they can't...
They're more comfortable for dancing than...
That's right. Okay. Then moving on now to number four, I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
A second?
Moved by Mary, seconded by CJ.
Jeanette.
One of the, one of the two.
Tie goes to the runner.
Tie goes to the runner. Any discussion? All in favor?
So moved.
All right. Do any of you have any questions for any of the administrators' reports that were in our packet?
I have a question for poor Mike.
Poor Mike?
It's his new name.
So we were looking at the graph earlier and wondering, with the, the parents or the guardians that are logging in, are you able to tell, is it the upper grades that you're seeing more, or the lower grades?
Some of them have multiple children in the school, so...
So it doesn't tell?
No, I can't, I could assort whether, what child the, the parent is tied to. I can break it down like that.
Okay. I was just kind of curious where the numbers aren't hugely growing.
No.
But we thought maybe the younger grades aren't getting in there as much, or maybe some of them are looking through their Kids App still.
That's a good question. I'll try to break those numbers down next time.
Yeah, because I know, for me, most of my kids' stuff is still on paper. So...
When they hand them?
Yeah. So when, you know, Quinn does a spelling quiz every Friday, they write it on their notebook, and they hand it in to their teacher, and the teacher hands it back to them with the grade. So that comes home in a folder.
Yeah.
And, you know, Theo's in kindergarten, he doesn't have any tests or anything that would go into it, really. So occasionally, a note will go through there from the teacher, but there's not really much to get looked at. So I, I have personally, myself, been very bad at going in, because at the times I have, there really hasn't been anything for me to look at.
Yeah. And you, you, do you get, do you have the app on your phone? And do you get any notifications at all from it?
Occasionally.
Yeah, I was, I was digging through classes to see who was doing what, and that's, that's a curious thing to look into. I'll, I'll try to break the numbers down by the grade level and see what... I can see the upper grades having more interaction because of their online presence is more. So, yeah, I'll try to crack those numbers down a little bit better for you guys.
Couple of comments on Bright Space. One, I put out a, a blackboard asking, you know, now would be a good time to check your students' progress, because it was about mid-trimester, which in lieu of a progress report, that was what we asked parents to do. The other one is, I want to remind everybody that this year, Bright Space, the, the gold standard is, let's get three, let's get three report cards out the door this year. And there's no pressure and no edict and no direction directive that the teachers use more than just what we need to do to report out. However, Jen has done a nice job at learning to be kind of our Bright Space expert from the front end as a teacher of teachers, and has offered mini workshops on Bright Space and some of the bells and whistles, if you choose to use it, over the last three ERDs, which has been awesome. So as we turn the page going into next year, we will be very confident on how to do grades. Then we'll, as a community, we'll set the standard of what's the minimum of Bright Space with all the bells and whistles should we use? So some of the pieces aren't being used because teachers haven't been trained or haven't really taken the interest to look at it yet, because there's no pressure to do that. For the beginning of next year, the ERD days we have when we open schools, there'll be a conversation about, okay, now that we're into year two with this, what's the lowest threshold parents should expect to see from you as a teacher? And we'll set those norms, and I can report out on those. Okay?
Good. Any other questions for any of the administrative reports in the packet? Then let's move on to the superintendent's report.
Perfect. I just have five quick things, just to let the public and the school committee know that basketball is now done at the middle school level. The basketball that continues, like, for instance, this evening that you'll hear will be rec. Rec goes for another month-ish or so, I think just before the break, maybe. What we, what we've done is, we've completed our year, and I do believe that Christie's having some sort of like banquet night where parents come, and it might be a parent-kid game, which is always fun. But big shout out to Christie as this year's athletic director. Basketball's the most challenging sport for an athletic director in most communities, and certainly it's just way more time-consuming than some of the other shoulder-season sports are. So she did a really nice job with that. Also, the sledding hill is open. For anyone who doesn't know that, yeah, should we go back to AD?
Sorry, on the basketball.
Your basketball.
Apparently, there was a teacher, children game, correct?
Oh, that was at the assembly.
At the assembly. How did that go?
Two Fridays ago. Mike played. Mike, how did that go?
You beat the kids?
Yeah, we've only lost once. In the 20-something years I've been here, we lost one time to the kids.
I just wanted to know if they did that.
Who was on the team?
Last, last five minutes, 20, 20 kids came storming in on the court.
For real?
It was 20 to 7, you know?
And they almost won.
They did. Two points down, and they were...
But I want to know, how high were the baskets?
Full height. Yeah.
All right, just checking, making sure that they had their game.
They lowered them, and I still missed every shot.
Mike even showed up to work on Monday. I thought he'd be in bed all weekend after someone's diving catches. You should see the guy.
Is there video?
There is. So, yes, thank you. That was part of the assembly. It was fun. The sledding hill is open, which I thought I'd celebrate, because there's very few schools that still have sledding hills and let kids go sliding. And we opened it three times this week, which has been kind of neat, because the snow is just right. So we'll do that as long as Mother Nature works with us. February break is a week from tomorrow, Friday, and it is an early release day going into February break at 12:30 for students and staff. Just a quick recognition to Andy, because he told me something, and this guy amazes me all the time. He doesn't know I'm doing this, but... Over the Martin Luther King Weekend, we had snow, and the place looked great when I came in here on Tuesday, and I'm like, wow, you know, we had pretty significant snow. This place looks pretty good. I go, how'd it go? And he goes, yeah, it went okay. And then I'm like, did everybody show up? And he goes, I didn't even ask them to. I wanted them to have a three-day weekend. So he took care of everything that we ended himself with his plow and his shovel, and usually the other guys come in as part of the job. But I was like, that's amazing. So I just wanted to shout out to Andy, because those are the things that you miss if you don't know.
We appreciate that. And I love seeing the yard look so good.
It looks awesome. Thank you.
And that's why he sent Eric up to shovel my...
But anyway.
Lastly, I would just like to read a letter to you. It's very brief. It is a, it is from Ms. Kami Davis, February 1, 2023. Hello, John. Please accept this letter as my official announcement that I plan to leave my position as art teacher at Acton Elementary School at the end of the 2022-2023 school year. I have enjoyed 38 years in this position, and I'm grateful for the support from administration, the school committee, and my peers. The fabulous art facility and the ample supply budget have made this a wonderful environment in which to teach. Thank you, Kami Davis.
Very nice.
So Kami will be retiring this year, and we'll miss her, and she has just been awesome for this place for so many years.
Done a fantastic...
But what other positions did she do? Did she do mentor? Did she do...
Yeah, she was certification chair for the, for the teachers for quite a few years. So that's, yes, that's the mentoring piece, yeah. And she's chair of that to make sure that everybody is certified, stays certified, so they can continue to, to work. You have to be certified.
I'm just thinking of who, how, a person that we're replacing, and she might wear many hats, like many of us do.
Just like everybody. You know, Kami was at one time also the liaison for the PTG. I'm only going back seven years. She's been here 38, so this 31 years of tenure, I'm sure she did a lot of things, but I'm just thinking in terms of my tenure. She's, she's also the team leader for the specials and has been for a while. So with her leaving, we have a gap in leadership in the, in the cohort too. So that doesn't mean we necessarily need to hire for leadership too, but you never know who's going to come down the pike, right? So that'll be interesting. But anyway, Kami's a really great person and has been an awesome asset to this school for 38 years, and we're going to wish her, wish her well.
She'll be missed.
She surely will be missed very much. So we need a motion?
No, I just wanted to update you, resignations or resignations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you sure we don't have to vote on a resignation? Because I remember saying, I don't think they can leave. No, seriously.
You know what? I stand corrected. You can vote to accept the resignation.
I don't know.
What happens if you don't accept it, I guess is my question. Where are we? Because she wrote the letter, so...
I can't believe she can't give us a few more years.
In the years of doing this, you have always voted on a resignation.
Well, there you go. There you go.
I will look for a motion for someone to...
What could you object motion?
To motion, to make a motion to accept the resignation of Kami Davis with much, much regret and much gratitude.
I'll do it. Much regret.
And gratitude.
And gratitude.
I guess I'll second it.
Motion by Amanda, seconded by CJ.
She deserves the break.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Sort of.
No. I don't see her here telling me why. No, I'm kidding. I'll raise my hand.
Thank you.
After 38 years, you don't have to tell why.
I appreciate it, because she had a lot of my children. Oh, she had all my children.
I think it's because she's got too much artwork piled up in her house from the kids. She, when Ethan was little, she came out and caught me one year. She goes, this says it's made by Ian, Ethan's dad. So I showed it to him, brought it home, and put it on the fridge.
Oh, no!
I hope she doesn't have a fire at the house.
I'm just kidding.
Well, I mean, all you have to do is look at the, look at the bulletin boards around the school that she puts up out here where the kids work, and sometimes on the ceiling even, and the, the budget books that we put out before budget, during budget season usually has artwork by the kids in it. So, yeah, she's, she's done a fantastic job. We've been very fortunate to have her talent for all these years, and she'll be much missed. Anything else on your report?
No, ma'am, I'm all done. Thank you.
Okay. All right. How about committee reports? Do we have some committee reports? How about the policy committee?
Well, the policy statement for free and reduced lunch, we don't need to do that. That's been updated, and that's all taken care of. And the other one, J E C A, residency affidavit. I don't think everybody saw the reprint. There was a couple of words we changed, so we're going to wait till next time. It's not an emergency, so we can wait.
Okay, then. How about long range?
Did not meet tonight.
All right. So then let's move on to number seven, which is new business. And we'll begin with the calendar.
So, Lord, we did this in, I think we did this at the April meeting in the last few years. We're doing it early. It was recommended, and we still got Kim tethered a little bit to us, as Paula's still learning a lot, and she mentioned, as we go into the budget season, we probably want to get our calendar straightened out, which is fine. We can, we can vote on this tonight, or you can table it and vote on it later. But this is the calendar that has been reviewed by myself, by Mike, who's picked up part of this work. And thank you, Mike, for getting everything organized in this format. And then was given to the union to review to make sure that they have input. That's part of what we do. We changed a couple of things after meeting with the union, and this seems to be the calendar that everybody seems happy with for staff that we give to you. But of course, the calendar is, is under the purview of the school committee to accept it or not. So I present to you the next year's calendar, and if for any reason we figure out we're going to make amendments at any reason later, we can do that.
Well, I was going to say, we always wait for Sanford and see what they do.
What we did, Mike, you want to just mention the call you had with Sanford on that TBA?
Yeah, they, they mentioned that their anticipation is before Labor Day, start of school. But they have to align with all of the school districts that go to there for vocational, and they have to meet a certain, on days that they can miss totally. So it depends contractually on, on their vocational students, what day they will start on. They're hoping before Labor Day.
Okay. And like you said, we could always change it.
You can, and we've not always had the same schedule, except we started at different times, and we swapped those holidays. Again, you'll see that Indigenous Peoples' Day in October is a day of school for kids, and it won't be in Sanford if they follow their tradition. And it'll be for us, because we have PD days in, in late August, and it seems silly to burn your last PD day in October. So we've moved it out to March the last few years, and you'll see it's March 15th next year. And they will be in school, and our kids will have that day off. So it's just, there's a change that we did a few years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. The specific email says August 28th, 30th, or September 5th are their anticipated start dates, depending on contracts with other school districts.
So, yeah, okay. So as late as the day after Labor Day or right there where we are, 28, 29.
Labor Day is very early. Holy... Am I looking at the 4th? September 4th?
That seems about...
The trick with Labor Day, when it's like the 7th, which is the la, latest it can be in a week, actually the 8th, right? Or the 1st, because it's like really early or really late, and it does things to the rest of the calendar, the 4th is kind of right in the middle.
Yeah, it is.
Do you want to vote on this tonight, or do you want to look at it?
Yeah, I think we could vote on it.
I mean, they've done, done all the background work on it that needs to be done.
I think Veterans Day is spelled wrong. It is, yeah.
Yeah. Phonetically.
Phonetically spelled right, but...
Veteran.
In English, it's a veteran.
It has an ER. So there we go.
It's the New England spelling, right?
It's the Mena. Mena.
So if you pass this, it'll be with the title fixed.
Why is there so much green in May? Look at that, all green out there.
So you can, the, the green is your NWEA window, and we haven't chosen, but those are the, that's the window open and the window closed. Now each cohort can pick when in that window they want. It's pretty, you're right, Jen, it's pretty much the month, and same with October.
Yeah.
Because we want to do our pre-testing in October as early as we can, and we want to go out as late as we can in the school year to maximize the amount of instructional time to witness growth.
Yeah. We also have to align with the state, so they're going to send us dates. That's roughly when they've been doing it, so we're going to be within that window, hopefully.
Okay. Well, when you're ready, I'll look for a motion to adopt the Acton Elementary School Calendar for 23, 24, as presented.
So moved.
A second?
Mary and CJ. Any further discussion on the calendar? Anything else you want to do? Okay. Then all those in favor? All right. March 17th, number 72.
Correct. This is the last order of business with the school committee, and this is something that I've talked to the staff about, and I need to bring to you because it's your decision. So in this, so we've looked at next year's calendar, we put that aside, but in this year's calendar, very similar to next year's calendar, March 17th is a Friday workshop day where staff, both at techs and teachers, report for the day, for their day, and the kids don't come. What the request is, can, would the board be interested in supporting having kids come to school that day and not have it be a PD day for teachers, as we can make up that PD at another time?
Oh, because of the snow days we got?
It's a perfect way of, because we're already at 3, it's a perfect way to clean up at least a day, and the staff's here anyway. So I ran it by everybody, and there's nobody on staff, and I have no objections to it. But I told everybody, that's not really my call. I need to run it by you. And then my, of course, then it's on me to communicate. If you choose to do this, it's on me to communicate with the public as a board action tonight, Friday, March 17th, which is still a month out. That day will be a school day, and if you have already made plans, because you make plans, you just need to reach out to me. And what I would do is I'd talk to the family, and that would be an excused absence for the child. I'm not going to hold them to that, because we published a calendar that didn't have that as a day.[1576.24] that as a day. However, Sanford goes that day. So if you have an older kid, they're going to school that day anyway. I think the amount of people that might be taken off that day is probably pretty minimal based on our school calendar, but for anybody that has a request, I would grant it.
Now, what day is the last day of school if we do this?
It depends. If we have more snow days.
Let's not, let's make believe.
We have no more snow days?
Yes, let's make believe. Because I don't want anyone.
It would be a day off from whatever our current one is right now. It would be in the 16th, it'd be that Friday.
Friday, the 16th.
So right now, if we do this.
It's one day, we've had three off. I, I wouldn't, to get us to Friday, I would probably have to request some ERD time on top of this.
Okay, yes.
Which I'm not doing tonight. Which I'm not doing tonight. I'm only looking for this day because it's coming up and we don't meet again. Well, we might meet just before the 17th, but I want to give a long runway to parents to understand we changed it. I want to give plenty of time.